Uh, can I call Frank County, place a lady to order, please?
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Present.
Chair Harris?
Present.
Vice Chair Metter?
Present.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
Let us pray. Lord, we are thankful and grateful today for this day you've given us. We're thankful for a beautifully mild week thus far, and we pray that you would continue to bless our county. Lord bless these leaders as they navigate what is a national political dumpster fire to be local leaders that matter, that make a real difference in the lives of people that we live right here in Franklin County. We're so grateful for them and pray you'd impart your wisdom, your discernment, as well as just a maturity that surpasses, Lord, the circus that our nation has become. We love you and trust you and ask these things in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Have a proclamation for the animal shelter. Will it come out?
Morning.
Morning. You want me to read the proclamation first?
Yeah, read it. We always usually read it first.
All right. Whereas dogs and cats are the integral part of the quality of life of our community and with approximately 5,780 pet dogs, 6,315 pets, cats living in Franklin County, and 89.9 million dogs and 61.9 million cats nationwide. And whereas animal shelter employees must respond to the needs of the community, keeping animals and humans safe from harm. And whereas animal shelters make communities better places to live, taking stray animals off the streets and out of harms way. And whereas animal shelters help both animals and people in many ways by returning lost pets to their owners, educating the public, and matching homeless animals with loving new families. And whereas animal shelters receive important donations of money, goods, and volunteer time to assist in the important missions in their important missions. And whereas Prairie Paw's Animal Shelter reflects best shelter practices with veterinary care, enrichment, and socialization programs to provide the best possible outcome for each animal in its care. And whereas Franklin County is one of the kindest counties in America to homeless pets. Now therefore, the Franklin County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2nd through the 8th to be 2025 to be Animal Shelter Appreciation Week.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Well, thanks for doing this. I know you've done it a few years for me now. And I will drive from here to Emporia and then back to the Ottawa community to do a tour of proclamations, and it's just a fun way to spend the day. And we have a few really exciting updates. Obviously Prairie Paw's has grown significantly from humble beginnings in Franklin County. This year, it's anticipated that we're going to serve 8,000 pets through our three locations. And our volunteers are projected to contribute 10,000 hours of unpaid labor across our organization. So we matter to a lot of people and a lot of pets right now. And we are a couple of weeks away from me driving to Columbus and picking up our mobile spay neuter clinic. And we'll hopefully to launch that in the spring in the rural areas that don't have access to affordable spay neuter. So we're doing huge things. So I'm just really happy that you're doing this for us.
Well, thank you.
How full are you?
How full are we? We have only about 250 pets across the three locations, and we can get all the way up to 400. So we're actually doing okay. We're moving them pretty quickly through. We have some lingering disease left over from kitten season, so the kittens bring a lot of disease in. But kitten season's nearing the end and we'll get caught up. The winter is kind of our relaxed time.
Like my vet said, a mom or a female cat loves to be pregnant.
Yeah.
That's what our vet said.
It shouldn't be multiply like rabbits. It should be multiply like cats. It should be.
Always interested, how do you know how many dogs and cats there are in the county?
Yeah, they have like a national, like a algorithm that you can multiply your population by a number, and you can estimate how many pets are there based off of some broader studies, so.
But thing, so across the nation, though, there's more dogs than cats, but in Franklin County, we're thinking there's more dog, we're more cats than dogs.
Yeah, because we also look at the cats that we bring in. So it's kind of the two algorithms combined.
You have farms, you have lots of cats.
Yeah, we receive Prairie Paw's actually serves more cats than dogs. So that kind of is included in the algorithm. Yeah, cats are getting adopted quicker. I think there's a bit of a switch in pet ownership, moving from dog ownership to cat ownership with the newer generations. And cats are doing amazing on social media. Cats have had a great rebrand. They're all over TikTok and have become like a modern pet. People are less likely to adopt large dogs. And we can track all of that through the length of stay from when they come into the shelter to when they leave. And we can run that across species, color, size, age, and we can project basically when the animal enters about how long it will take for an adopter to adopt that pet based off of those key factors. Yeah, the data is insane that we have right now. Yeah.
Somebody to vote on this?
You usually do.
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer? Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Can we do a picture? Can we do a photo?
I can't take a picture because I forgot.
Do we go down there?
Yeah.
I think Vanessa.
Oh, sorry. Oh, it was your chair. I thought it was you.
What happened to you?
No, I got out of bed.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't have to go.
You're their chair.
Yeah, you're the chair. All right.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
I'll let you have your meat.
A big comment?
None.
Consider agenda. Consider approval of claim vouchers and tax orders as 407, 951, and 55 cents. And also to consider the Frank County meeting minutes of October 29th. That's it.
Most approved. Consent agenda.
Okay.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
I'm yes, but abstain abstain from the minutes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Item number one, consider approval lease agreement between Commissioners and National Hospital, Derek.
Yeah, this item speaks for itself. In fact, I almost put it on the consent agenda. It's just a renewal of Advent Health's lease in Suite 3. It's been updated consistent with what we currently are charging our tenants, and it has the rent escalator built in. I've obviously reviewed it. Advent Health's legal counsel has reviewed it, so I think we're all good to go. Just need an approval. Make a motion to renew the leases in front of us between the county and Advent Health Hall.
Second.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Item two. Commission should elect a voting delegate for the 50th Annual Association Counties Conference, Janet.
So this is for your KAC conference that's coming up in December. So we just need one delegate and two two alternates for this meeting, and there'll be people who are attending the meeting out. I'm not even sure where it's at this year.
Wichita, I think so.
Wichita, yeah. I think you're right.
I'm not going to Wichita, so.
I don't think I am either.
I am.
I am.
You going to Wichita, Rod?
Planned on it.
He'd be an alternate, I'd assume, not the main.
Usually it's past history. It's either chairman or vice chairman.
Oh, I guess that makes me.
I'd make a motion to vice chairman.
Do you want to do the the alternates at the same time?
I am.
Sure.
Okay, so Sabrina has the voting delegate, and Ian and Dawn as the alternate is what Dawn's motion is.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
The Commission should elect a voting delegate for alternate, alternate for the annual K-Camp meeting.
This is a similar thing. This is just another meeting that's held within the KAC conference. So this this is with the next item too. It's your K-Camp and your K-Work representatives. And so you just need a delegate and an alternate for these.
Both on the other ten meetings at the same time.
I believe they can be the same one because I believe you do attend the meetings. The meeting is the same time.
They actually are changing it this year, so it's not like during supper.
Yes.
It's actually one of the, one of the sessions, so you aren't, you are missing a session, but you are not missing other things. So it's actually a good, a good move that they made.
Yeah, it used to cause you to have to miss a dinner with with some folks that you wanted to eat with, so.
Take a stab at a motion. The motion would be to make Commissioner Metter the K-Camp and K-Works voting delegate, and the alternates for both being Commissioner Stottermeyer and Dickinson.
I think we all need one.
We just need one for this one.
Is that all right? Do you want to?
Yeah, that's fine. I don't mind. Yeah, I figured it'd just be easy.
I think Colt's trying to be efficient, and I applaud that.
Yeah.
We cannot K-Camp and K-Work out at the same time. So if you guys agree, the dual motion makes a lot of sense.
And then whoever wants to be the delegate, Ian, or if there's any need.
So do you want to be the alternate?
Not delegate, the alternate.
I like to decide by height.
Be the alternate.
I'll be the alternate.
Ian will be the alternate.
Yeah, so I'll be the alternate.
Sounds great. We have a motion from Commissioner Waymeyer.
Second. I don't know if I can second it, but I did.
Sure.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
So we're skipping on to five?
Yes.
Consider the approval of special use permit application 2508, 0009, Perry.
Morning, Commissioner. Okay, we're looking at commonly known as 1459 Pawnee Road, located roughly three and a half miles northeast of Pomona. The applicant is requesting to be allowed to conduct a gunsmithing operation on the prop, on his property in an accessory structure on the property. The property is an A1 district totaling a 44.8 acres. This SUP is specifically for gunsmithing, not a gun store, not a gun range. Generally, the majority of the work is through the mail. He may receive a gun or gun parts in the mail, and then he manufactures the parts to be replaced, repaired, or upgraded. The majority of the work is fitting barrels onto custom rifles for hunting and marksmen's competitions. Generally, customers do not come to the property, although the occasional customer may drop drop in if they're relatively local. This operation was previously established in the city limits of Baldwin City since 2017. Conversation during the planning commission meeting was concerned neighbors that the how, that the business will progress into a shooting range or will become a weapons testing area. Mr. Perry said the only weapons that will be fired are his personally owned weapons as a private citizen. Through discussions with the neighbors and the applicant agreed to discuss together a plan to alleviate concerns amongst all parties involved with those discussions. We also received a letter from a current landowner in the direct region with objections to the SUP being approved. The letter is attached in your staff reports. I don't believe they actually live in this state, but it's just their beliefs. The planning commission and staff recommend the following conditions. Number one, the special use permit is granted for repair, modification, trade, and selling of firearms and other gunsmithing activities. Any additional uses will require a require approval of an amended special use permit. The applicant, number two, the applicant shall comply with all license and documentation required of the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives. Number three, that all activities associated with the gunsmithing operation shall be conducted within the designated garage or shop structure. Number four, the firearms and inventory be placed in a secure location as to be inaccessible to unauthorized individuals. Number five, the location of the gunsmith business must be compatible with the nature of the business inaccessible for any inspections that may be conducted by the ATF investigator to ensure all federal and local regulations are being met. Number six, the applicant must contact the sheriff's office to make them aware of the gunsmithing operation within 30 days of approval. And number seven, the special use permit shall be null and void by operation of law if said permit has not been initiated and utilized by commencing the activity or used at the site specified in the said permit within one year of approval. With that, planning commission and staff both recommend approval. The applicant is here if you have any questions.
I I had one question too. We're saying it's not a gun store, but the very, but number one on the special use permit says for the selling of firearms?
So technic, but through technicalities, he's not going to have shelves and stuff like that. But the ATF does consider every weapon that goes, that he receives full in contact, then he does whatever work is considered a sale of weapons. So he has, because they keep record, very stringent records of what comes through his operation. So we do have to word it as such to allow for the federal guideline, because of the federal guidelines.
So then he has like an FFL?
Yes.
Okay.
I love the fact that when he was involved with, his neighbors didn't even know what he did, so that's pretty cool.
And I believe, yeah.
The fear of what might happen being disruptive to neighbors, but in reality, the fear of what, or the reality of what he's doing, I can't see is any more intrusive than a home office, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'd be ready for a motion to approve if there's no more conversation.
Good.
Yeah, I guess I'll second.
Okay.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Item six, approval rezon application 2509, 00544, Pat.
Yes, this is a commonly known as 3058 Kingman Road, located two miles to the east of Ottawa. The applicant is requesting to create a four acre lot out of a 42 acre lot just over. The potential new lot will be rezoned to 3A, R3A district, and the remaining 39.26 will then be rezoned to the A2 district. The existing home on the four acre lot is served by Rural Water 2. Septic is located to the west side of the driveway where the property juts out. The barn is to stay with the 38 acres. There was no significant discussion. Both staff and planning commission recommend approval.
There's no discussion, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Item seven, amendments to Frank County zoning regulations for signs, Pat.
Okay, yes. So Mr. Fred Winger, owner of Winger Signs Company, has approached and requested that we change our sign regulations to closer align our local regulations with the state statutes adopted at the state, State House. This will make it easier to navigate the regulations for a company or person wanting to add a billboard in the county jurisdiction. The main changes include, number one, moving the setbacks to 15 feet from the original 50 feet from the, from a state or county right of way. This is to move the sign somewhat out of the middle of usable property for the landowner. Kind of push it towards the road. Number two, instead of measuring the sign from grade of the land it stands on, it will now be measured from the grade of the road with a maximum height of 50 feet. Number three, changing the maximum size of the individual face of each sign from 1,200 to 1,512 square feet, and allow it to four individual double facing signs, so two facing each direction. And number four, the last regulation change is reducing the setback between signs from 1,000 feet to 500. The only discussion that was based on questions was if we could establish signs on agricultural properties. There's state statutes that they won't even allow it from there, so we didn't acknowledge it, and we kept that out of our own.
It's in line with Highway Beautification Act from federal government.
I believe that is correct. The state will actually lose money. Not sure how Missouri gets around it. I was asked that. I still don't know the answer to that, because if you go down I-70 once you hit Missouri, there's typically signs everywhere, but.
Be grandfathered in.
Something of that nature. It could be. But with that, planning commission and staff both recommend approval.
Might still require a special use permit?
They do not, they do not require special use permits, but they do require building permits.
So did he ever talk about like where he, like, because you know, he had letters from like different people saying.
Correct. So at this time, the only.
There's not a lot of commercial property right along the highways. And I mean, obviously, he's probably thinking 59 and all the other ones too, so I was just curious.
So this specific situation, he actually approached us long before this is, we were going to look at this about two years ago. But we had plans with the conference of plan, and that got pushed off. So we're now looking at this just because he does have a sign that he's putting up on Mr. Hunter's property off of Nebraska and I-35, kind of sandwiched in between off 15th. And so we decided to go ahead and go ahead forward with these changes because we are seeing the potential, and and we don't know when we're going to get to.
Clean up conflict between our regulations and state.
Because the state already approved it, and I, and he wants another one, which did not meet our regulations. And I said, well, let's, let's clean up our regulations, and then we'll reapproach your application.
Now, they won't be able to like, well, I want to sign here on this piece of agricultural land, so I'll just take this little footprint and make it commercial.
Generally, we won't allow that to happen because they have to go through the rezoning process, and we'll know, I mean, we'll generally know, but also we won't create strips or, you know, spot, a spot within, because you got to meet all the criteria for frontage and everything of that nature. So our, our general regulations for creating those parcels will make it difficult to do such. But we won't create a sign per, or a, yeah, a property specific for a sign.
I just, you know, when you go to Branson, that's not what I want to see going down.
A hundred percent agree with you.
Ottawa.
Absolutely. And and I was, personally, I was conflicted with the, even the 500 feet. Now, I don't feel that we should be denying permits that the state is applying, is approving, so I just was satisfied with the 500. But I agree with you. Even Junction City kind of looks pretty rough when you get through there, so.
Motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Metter?
Yes.
Chair Harris?
Yes.
Staff reports, Derek.
Yeah, just real quick, this is obviously well within my spending authority, but I wanted to run it by the five of you. Time capsule event coming up Thursday, December 4th. Want to turn that into an opportunity to have a holiday celebration, decorate the courthouse up really nice, give tours of the courthouse, photo opportunities in the courthouse. I think this would be a fantastic use of transient guest tax funds because it will bring in folks from outside of the community. An estimate on everything, and that includes someone opening the existing time capsule, a new time capsule. We think it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 3-ish thousand for the celebration for all of it. Just want to make sure that doesn't give you all heartburn before I give my team the go ahead. Yeah.
What time is it?
Three to six.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we'll be pushing a lot of information out on that. We've got something ready to go out to all of the schools. We're going to give the schools an opportunity to create something to go in the new time capsule. Really pleased with the work that the team's doing, so.
Sounds like hell, a real good opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'll be a lot of fun.
With the courthouse.
Building up for.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And I think a lot of that, like, we just, you know, like, putting a nine foot Christmas tree in the historic courtroom itself and decorating it. And I think what the plan is, is to use the judge's bench and get it decorated with garland and give folks a photo opportunity. We've kind of put this out there, and we've gotten great feedback on that. So buying like ornaments that are also souvenirs from the event, so that will state, you know, time capsule opening, the date, what it means, and buying so many to give out to folks who get there. Like, they've put a lot of thought into it, and Jeff, I know you're part of that team. If you have anything you'd like to add, I think it's going to be a really cool deal.
There are some great people on that committee. That's all I can say, with some great ideas. And it's not me.
That's all I have, Rod. Thanks.
Do we need to make a motion or just?
No, no, no. I can authorize that.
Let us know what's going on.
Also, it'd be the 170th year for Franklin County.
Okay, okay.
Oh, five was 110. So this will be the 170th year for Franklin County.
170. I heard 117, but 170, gotcha.
Yeah, 170.
Thank you.
Double check me, but I'm pretty sure that's right.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
And I know that's something we'll discuss later, but I always, I thought, whatever we get out of there, it's too bad. I know eventually it'll end up in Historical Society, probably eventually. But it would be really nice if there was something we could do for maybe one year to display it in the courthouse somewhere.
I think Brandon's got us, but he's cleaning out his face.
Yeah, I know eventually it'll end up in the Historical Society eventually.
Yeah, no, we're going to display.
Have it so the public could come in and can't come to that day or whatever. Would give them a year or two to to view it, you know?
Almost too, I mean, it'd be even nice to have it like go around to the schools or something for, just have it travel, but I don't know.
Like a field trip for the schools.
Cool.
Come to the courthouse.
It'll, it will be displayed in the historic courthouse.
A lot of people tour it, that's. A lot more people go through there than go through.
Right.
The historical side they go there for just a few item or that item where the courthouse is a whole adventure.
I think that's awesome.
So we're like, not the way you're, we start to get pretty good ideas on what goes back in and then.
We're starting to push that information out now, and that was always going to be the challenge with having to do it in early December while the contractor is still here. But yes, we are meeting on that this afternoon. And yeah, we'll, we will take as much information as we can get on that.
All right. Sheriff's Office. Jeff?
Anna?
One thing. So you, we wrapped up the election last night, and we have your canvas scheduled for next Wednesday immediately following the commission meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Colt won't be there. Anyone else have a conflict with that?
How long do you think it'll take? Do you have a lot?
No.
I have 11, I have an 11 o'clock Meals on Wheels, so I'll be done by then.
Hopefully, we'll be done by then.
You got it, Tisa.
I'll guarantee it, Ian.
Okay.
Shorter the meeting, the better. Quisters?
Yeah, I did, I kind of, I wish Paul was here. He kind of understands it more than I do. I know at the Wellsville meeting the other night, and they had like seven different builders, building around Wellsville or in Wellsville. And they're putting together a, an idea to expand on a bunch of the streets in town to prepare for more housing. And so I know it acted like the, I'll give Paul a happy clue with more, but something the funds are coming through. It won't be stuck on the city, but it's actually been put on the developers. And they're, and developers are the ones that are bringing it forward. They're wanting to see it happen. So that was the main thing up there. I did go rant a little meeting the other night. They're making pretty good progress on some. They're making pretty good progress on some stuff down there. They've declared several homes to be tore down and taken out properties through their code enforcement deal they have now down there. And they're also they had a builder that's coming out to build two new homes in the city of Rentsville and then individuals going to build one. So that's three. Three is that's a big deal for any small town in the county. But the other looks like they're moving forward on when they opened up another well. They did the water well they got in. They got a new lot, new cohorts. They hired a local man to come in with a speed loader and clean out a bunch of the places down here in a couple of weeks. So it sounds like they're doing a few things then. That's all I got.
Last Friday, I went to the Kansas Tire and Tread ribbon cutting. They are tire shop that I think could be well utilized because they will they have a truck and will do calls and go out. And even if you have tractor tires and things like that, and I know sometimes that's difficult. You have those bigger vehicles, but they do everything from tires to oil changes and transmissions they've done. So I think they'll be a good addition to the community. Also, November 11th is Veterans Day. So I just wanted to, you know, honor all those who have fought for our country and have served. And this Saturday, the Kansas Honors or Franklin County Honors is doing a Veterans Day parade at 10:45 downtown.
I went to a couple of meetings. One of them, I went to Princeton on Monday night. They are going to authorize another half cent sales tax. They are not moving very quickly to get any money from the federal government to address some of their drainage and road issues. So they are going to place that on next year's ballot so that they can have hopefully some money to start working on that, that they'll be contacting you. I told them, don't do it on, don't do it on Tuesday that week. And then this is not, but this is just, this is a very important time for you to keep track of your neighbors. If people don't have food, it's not good. So check on your neighbors, check on your family. If you're doing good, you might think about dropping by a check to Hope House. There's going to be some people hurting in our county. So until things get straightened out, we need to care about each other. So that's all I got.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.